The meeting is now called to order. Clerk, call the roll.
Mr. Dahlahan? That unmutes me.
Is that it?
Mr. Dahlahan here?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay. Mrs. Gensimer?
Here.
Mr. Craftcheck?
Here.
Moore? Mr. Moore?
He was having difficulty. He sent me a text message and he said he was waiting to be admitted to the meeting.
Okay. I do see, I see Mr. Moore on the screen.
Mrs. Rich?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
I can't hear you, Sue.
Josie, did you say you could or you could not hear Sue?
I think she said she could not hear her. I'll call her on my cellphone.
Reese, can you hear? It doesn't appear like he can. Josie, can you hear me? She cannot.
Hey Josie, down in the left-hand column, left-hand corner of the screen, there's a mute button. You did? We'll try it again. Click it again then.
All right, I can do that, but I can't hear anybody else.
I can hear you fine on the screen.
How about now, Josie? Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you, Judy.
Okay.
Can you hear me, Josie?
Red stays up when I stop clicking it on the bar.
Oh, you're red again now.
She's using the spacebar.
Oh.
Can, can everybody hear me?
I can hear you.
Okay.
I'm just one though.
But I don't, I don't, we have not received an acknowledgement from Reese Moore yet.
Yes, I'm here.
And then how about Ray?
Mine stays on red. Is that what it's supposed to do?
Josie, yes, it'll stay on red unless you hit the spacebar, then you can talk. Until then, you're muted. You can't hear me? Josie's is muted. Josie, can you talk? Let me see. I don't know why we can't hear Josie. Josie, hit the spacebar.
I know, but that's all I have. I have no other sound. I can only hear myself.
So now keep the spacebar down. Hold the spacebar down. Raymond, can you hear?
I'm calling in my tech.
Yes? Ray, you can hear?
Yes, I can.
Okay, okay. So we're just waiting for Josie. Make sure that it says it's connected to your computer audio.
Kim?
No, that's Kim. I don't know where Kim is. Can anybody hear me now?
Yeah, you're fine. Can you hear us?
Yep.
Can't hear us, Josie? I'll call you.
I can hear Josie. I, I can read your lips, Judy.
I'm calling you. Kim was saying make sure that your computer is hooked to computer audio. It is. Okay. We do hear you fine when you talk. Okay. Okay, yes, and you're muted in front of me as well. So when you hit the spacebar, everyone hears you just fine. So somewhere it's on the audio on your end.
There are people in the waiting room, Kim.
How about now, Josie, can you hear? Just through the telephone? You can only hear me through the telephone at this point? Okay. Why don't, why don't you just leave the meeting and come back in? Okay. Testing, one, two, three, four, five, five, four, three, two, one. About now. Testing, one, two, three, four, five, five, four, three, two, one.
I can hear you, Judy, yes.
Wait, am I coming through my phone or you're on the meeting? Still can't hear anything?
If there's anybody talking, no, I cannot.
Okay. Try. Why don't you try signing out and sign back in? Just leave the meeting completely and come back. Let's see what happens. No, she's gonna sign out and sign back in.
So on her mute all.
Same system, okay. I apologize for the delay. Josie's going to, she signed out, she's gonna sign back in and hopefully that will fix it.
Hi Frank, Judy, can you hear me now?
I can hear you.
Judy, can you hear us?
Yes, that's affirmative. I spoke without pushing the spacebar down. Can hear you just fine. Josie, just give a little short test count.
One, two, three, four, five.
I think we're good. That being said, just to get everybody back on the same page, I'm gonna start from the beginning and have the clerk call the roll. Clerk, call the roll.
Mr. Dahlahan?
Present.
Mrs. Gensimer?
Here.
Mr. Craftcheck?
Here.
Mr. Moore?
Here.
Mr. Parsick?
Here.
Mrs. Rich?
Here.
The meeting is now open. Adequate notice of the meeting was provided by posting a copy of the time and place on the municipal clerk's bulletin board and mailing a copy of same to the press and the Cape May County Herald on January 13th, 2020. For the record, this council meeting is being held via video telephone and conference via Zoom. I will remind you to be very cognizant of anything sounding or moving in the background. Will everyone please rise at this time to salute the flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. At this time, we're going to have our budget presentation. I'm gonna advise everybody on your computers, the audio is a little bit low, so please turn your computers all the way up so you're able to hear the budget presentation. Please cue the budget presentation. Kim is in the process of setting up that budget presentation. Her computer has frozen. There it is.
We have people waiting in the waiting room also.
It was a 1.7 cent increase on the tax rate. The ratables increased 37,854,900 over last year. We still have two caps, a levy cap and a spending cap. This budget is 1.26 million under the levy cap and 500,000 under the spending cap. Current fund expenditures. Salaries make up 31% of the budget. Other expenses make up 25% of the budget and actually decrease slightly over the prior year. Debt makes up 22% of the budget and also slightly decreased over the prior year. Reserve for uncollected taxes are approximately 3% of the budget and relatively unchanged. Capital is 11% this year, up from 5% in 2019, and grant statutory expenditures are the same as last year at 8%. The salary portion of the budget increased 248,160 dollars. And the largest increase is because of seasonal wages for ga, for guards and beach taggers, 114,846 dollars. Public works salary wages, seasonal salary wages increased 25,000. The minimum wage is gonna increase 80 cents a year until it reaches 15 dollars an hour in 2026. So this will continue to increase year after year. The other large increase over the prior year is in debt. Debt is, or I'm sorry, capital. Capital is up 1,081,332 dollars over 2019, and here are some of the projects that are causing the capital to increase. The debt and flood management appropriation for 100,000 dollars. We have two reserves this year for 345,000. The reserve for Back Bay dredge management and the reserve for beach replenishment. Beach and bay access, 55,000. Stormwater master plan for 54,000. Cash for recurrent capital items for 546,500. And there'll be a slide on that later. Down payment for capital projects, 600,000. That represents the 5% down payment required for capital. Current firing revenues. Surplus. We did use more surplus this year to balance the budget. That represents a slight increase. Local revenues, they're up slightly as well. Local revenues is up 181,000, and it's from the increase in beach tax fees and interest income. And then the other change is the local taxes, which is up 932,000 and represents 71% of the budget. Surplus. We ended 2019 with 3,116,169 dollars in surplus, up 223,691 from the prior year. We are using more surplus to balance the budget, however, we also leave in a greater balance. The percentage, we anticipate, we also anticipate we will generate at least 3.2 million in surplus in 2020 from operations. So we will replenish what we used to balance the 2020 budget. The percentage of surplus at the beginning of the year is the same as the prior year, 17% of the budget, and we're using about the same percentage of surplus to balance the budget as the prior year at 58%. The next series of slides go into the functional groups of the budget, beginning with administration and finance. The administration and finance budget is down 58,778 dollars over prior year, and the decrease came from a decrease in group insurance of 50,000 and general liability of 30,000. Salaries were up slightly, like 10,457 dollars or 1.5%. Some of the areas that fall in there, finance, administration, which includes the administrator's office, council, the mayor, municipal clerk, engineering and finance, tax administration, which includes tax office, tax assessment, planning zoning boards, legal services, construction office, insurance, medical, general liability, workers comp, property and vehicle. And this is how a breakdown of the money. 56% is for insurance, 22 for administration. Construction is the next largest at 7.2, then tax administration, legal services and planning zoning board. The next is public safety. Public safety budget is up 218,124 dollars over the prior year. The largest change is from rescue squad. The appropriation for that is up 100,000 dollars. The dispatch and services is down 53,623 dollars. The beach patrol and beach tagger salaries are up 114,846 dollars, and the police department OE budget is up 15,324 dollars. The rest of the departments remain mostly unchanged. Some of the areas covered are police, fire EMS, municipal court, uniform fire code, office of emergency management, fire hydrant service, beach patrol and taggers, animal control. And here's a breakdown of the appropriation. 49% is for police. Beach patrol and taggers are 19.2%, fire EMS 15%, and then dispatch costs 8.7, municipal court prosecutor, public defender 5.4, and then animal control and fire hydrant service. The next section is public works. Public works has an overall increase of 54,930 dollars or 2.47%. The operating budgets actually have a decrease of 13,820. Public works OE increased 3,100 dollars. Solid waste OE increased 1,000. Buildings and grounds 2,000. Safety compliance remained the same. Landfill fees decreased 20,000. Salaried wage increased 68,000 or 68,750 dollars or 4.26%. The areas that are covered under public works, Department of Public Works labor pool, solid waste, grounds, special events, safety compliance. Here's the breakdown. 52% is the Department of Public Works labor pool. 39% of the expense is solid waste. Buildings and ground 5.3, special events 2.1, safety compliance 1.3%. Natural resources. Overall, natural resource budget is up 7,715 dollars. Salaries of 25,000 are associated with the Burr Sanctuary and Point maintenance, and were the same as the prior year. Some of the areas of natural resource, beach and dunes, Back Bay, Burr Sanctuary, Stone Harbor, Point. 68% of, I'm sorry, 68,000 dollars is for OE and 25,000 is for salaried wage. Recreation and tourism saw an overall increase of 18,944 dollars or 4.24%. Recreation OE increased 9,960 dollars. Tourism OE decreased 4,616 dollars. Overall, salaried wages increased 13,600 or 5.71%. The areas that are included in tourism recreation are recreation, tourism and the marina. And most of the 52% of the budget is spent on recreation service, 40.5 on tourism, the museum 5.6, and the marina salary wage is 1.8%. Here are some of the projects included in the 2020 capital budget. Various road improvements, 1.5 million. The reserves for the beach and bay improvements, which were mentioned earlier, at 345,000, that totals 690,000. A solid waste truck for 178,000. Beach patrol, built-in bathrooms and parking lot for 4.1. Dredge flood management for 100,000. A modular bathroom for 115,000. Sidewalk replacement for 75,000. Storm sewer master plan 100,000. Beach patrol lifeboat radio system for 70,500, and various public works equipment, including a dump truck for 58,000. Water and sewer 2020 budget. Overall, there's an increase of 79,742 dollars. There is a decrease in other expenses of 13,130 dollars. The Cape May County MUA fee decreased 15,000. Debt service increased 62,000. Funding for prior capital projects increased 57,260 dollars, and capital expenditures decreased 12,000 dollars. Some of the areas that are covered, the sanitary sewer pumps, the water system distribution, maintenance of the sanitary sewer pumps, maintenance of the water system, the water tower and the wells, and the collection of the water and sewer rents. Overall, the budget is relatively the same as the prior year with a slight increase in rents. And this shows the other expenses decreasing slightly. Debt increasing a little bit. Capital and salaried wages approximately the same as prior year. Some of the capital projects, 2.3 million in infrastructure improvements associated with the road improvements. 1.2 million for the meter IRT replacement. 450,000 for the water tower and reservoir. Well and plant improvements of 140,000. Fire hydrant 12,000. Outfall check valve replacement 250,000. Stone Harbor has the second lowest overall tax rate in Cape May County. And the fifth lowest municipal tax rate in the county. And that concludes the presentation. It can be found on the borough's website at www.shnj.org. Thank you.
The public hearing on the budget is now open. Anyone who would like to address mayor and council on the budget may do so at this time by raising your hand electronically. If you're on the meeting via video, click on the appropriate location. If you are participating via telephone, please hit star nine. I see four screens of participants, some on video, some via telephone. I did not see any hands electronically raised. Therefore, I'm going to close the public hearing on the budget. Clerk, do we have any communications?
No, Mayor, we don't.
We will now have public comment. Anyone wishing to address mayor and council may do so at this time by, again, raising your hand electronically. If you're on the meeting via video, click on the appropriate location. If you are participating via telephone, please hit star nine. Seeing no hands raised electronically, I will close public comment. Ordinance 1565.
Madam Mayor, I move that ordinance 1565 be taken up on second reading.
Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Will the clerk read the title only of ordinance fifteen sixty-five on second reading?
An ordinance to exceed the municipal budget appropriation limits and to establish a cap bank.
The public hearing on ordinance fifteen sixty-five is open. I'm again clicking through four screens to see if anybody is raising their hand electronically during this public hearing. Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing on ordinance fifteen sixty-five.
Madam Mayor, I move that ordinance fifteen sixty-five be passed on second reading and advance to third and final reading.
Clerk, call the roll.
Mr. Dahlahan?
Yes.
Mrs. Gensimer?
Yes.
Mr. Craftcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Parzic?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Will the clerk read the title only of ordinance fifteen sixty-five on third and final reading?
An ordinance to exceed the municipal budget appropriation limits and to establish a cap bank.
Madam Mayor, I move that ordinance fifteen sixty-five be passed on third and final reading and adopted and published according to law.
Clerk, call the roll.
Mr. Dahlahan?
Yes.
Mrs. Gensimer?
Yes.
Parzic?
Yes.
Mr. Craftcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Ordinance fifteen sixty-six.
Madam Mayor, I move that ordinance fifteen sixty-six be taken up on first reading.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 This ordinance is for a bond ordinance for various improvements throughout the borough.
Will the clerk read the title only of ordinance fifteen sixty-six on first reading?
Bond ordinance appropriating ten million, two hundred and sixty-seven thousand and authorizing the issuance of nine million, seven hundred and fifty-three, six hundred and fifty dollars bonds or notes of the borough for various improvements or purposes authorized to be undertaken by the borough of Stone Harbor in the Kent of Cape May, New Jersey.
Madam Mayor, I move that ordinance fifteen sixty-six be passed on first reading, published according to law, and that it be taken up on second, third, and final reading and adoption at a meeting of mayor and council to be held on the fifth day of May, two thousand and twenty.
Second. Clerk, call the roll.
Mr. Dahlahan?
Yes.
Mrs. Gensimer?
Yes.
Mr. Craftcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Parzic?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Ordinance fifteen sixty-seven.
Madam Mayor and council, I move that ordinance fifteen sixty-seven be taken up on first reading.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Mrs. Gensimer, explanation of the ordinance?
Oh, excuse me, that is, that's.
Reese, I'm sorry.
My mistake, I apologize. This ordinance is for miscellaneous expenses for the water and sewer improvements throughout the borough.
Will the clerk read the title only of ordinance fifteen sixty-seven on first reading?
Bond ordinance appropriating four million, three hundred and fifty-six thousand and authorizing the issuance of four million, three hundred and sixty-five-six thousand bonds or notes of the borough for various water and sewer improvements or purposes authorized to be undertaken by the borough of Stone Harbor.
Madam Mayor and council, I offer a motion that ordinance number fifteen sixty-seven be passed on first reading, published according to law, and that be taken up on second, third, and final reading and adoption at the meeting of mayor and council to be held on the fifth day of May, two thousand and twenty.
Second. Clerk, call the roll.
Mr. Dahlahan?
Yes.
Gensimer?
Yes.
Craftcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Parzic?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Resolution two thousand and twenty S eighty-one.
Madam Mayor, offer resolution two thousand and twenty dash S dash eighty-one for adoption.
Second.
This resolution authorizes the council, mayor and council, to adopt the 2020 budget as presented and as posted on our website.
Any discussion? Clerk, call the roll.
Mr. Dahlahan?
Yes.
Mrs. Gensimer?
Yes.
Craftcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Parzic?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Resolution two thousand and twenty S eighty-two.
Madam Mayor and council, I offer resolution two thousand and twenty dash S dash eighty-two for adoption. Second. This resolution authorizes the renewal of a shared services agreement between the borough of Avalon, city of CL City, and the borough of Stone Harbor for utilization of the Comcast local addressed channel for a period of three years commencing April first, two thousand and twenty, through March thirty-first, two thousand and twenty. It is an extension of a franchise agreement with Comcast since two thousand and nine.
Any discussion? Clerk, call the roll.
Mr. Dahlahan?
Yes.
Mrs. Gensimer?
Yes.
Craftcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Parzic?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Resolution two thousand and twenty S eighty-three.
Madam Mayor, I present resolution two thousand and twenty dash S dash eighty-three for adoption.
Description of the resolution, please.
This resolution is for Regis Arcade application for an amusement games license.
Any discussion? Clerk, call the roll.
Mr. Dahlahan?
Yes.
Mrs. Gensimer?
Yes.
Craftcheck?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Parzic?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Resolution two thousand and twenty S eighty-four.
Madam Mayor, I propose resolution two thousand and twenty dash S dash eighty-four for the purchase of a Chevrolet four-wheel-drive truck for the Stone Harbor Fire Department. Second.
Any discussion? Clerk, call the roll.
Mr. Dahlahan?
Yes.
Mrs. Gensimer?
Yes.
Mr. Craftcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Parzic?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Resolution two thousand and twenty S eighty-five.
Madam Mayor and council, I offer resolution two thousand and twenty dash S dash eighty-five for adoption.
Second.
This resolution extends the grace period for payment of the utility bills and suspension of the water shutouts in compliance with the governor's declaration. So the extension is until April thirtieth, two thousand and twenty.
Any discussion? Clerk, call the roll.
Mr. Dahlahan?
Yes.
Mrs. Gensimer?
Yes.
Mr. Craftcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Parzic?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Resolution two thousand and twenty S eighty-six.
Madam Mayor and council, I offer resolution two thousand and twenty S dash eighty-six. It's for the refund of the building sewer cost. Second.
Any discussion? Clerk, call the roll.
Mr. Dahlahan?
Yes.
Gensimer?
Yes.
Mr. Craftcheck?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Parzic?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Resolution two thousand and twenty S eighty-seven.
Mayor and council, I offer resolution two thousand and twenty dash S dash eighty-seven for adoption. Second. This resolution is to award a contract in the amount of eight hundred and eighty-two thousand, six hundred dollars, awarding asphalt paving systems for the direction of the building and the wet well for the ninety-fourth Street Pump Station.
Any discussion? Clerk, call the roll.
Mr. Dahlahan?
Yes.
Mrs. Gensimer?
Yes.
Mr. Craftcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Parzic?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Resolution two thousand and twenty S eighty-eight.
Madam Mayor and council, I offer resolution two thousand and twenty dash S dash eighty-eight for the. This is for a proposal from the county to measure for measurements at the ninety-sixth Street Bridge.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, call the roll.
Judy?
Yes.
What do these, are these like little speed bumps? Is that what we're talking about?
Yes. Yes, essentially, an item in the roadway to slow down traffic, so yes, speed bumps.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Speed bumps to be located on the west side of the bridge, and the county engineer wanted both Stone Harbor and Middle Township to pass resolutions supporting it. Where was I? Any more discussion? Did I call the roll on that yet? No? Clerk, call the roll.
Mr. Dahlahan?
Yes.
Mrs. Gensimer?
Yes.
Craftcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Parzic?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Resolution two thousand and twenty S eighty-nine.
Madam Mayor and council, I offer resolution two thousand and twenty S dash eighty-nine. This is a consent order for settlement.
Second. Is there any discussion? Clerk, call the roll.
Mr. Dahlahan?
Yes.
Mrs. Gensimer?
Yes.
Craftcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Parzic?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
I need a motion approving the following special event applications.
Madam Mayor, I offer a motion to approve the following special events with the understanding that due to current events, there is a distinct possibility that they could be canceled in the future. The Shore Softball Classic, July twenty-fifth, grill demonstrations at Ace Hardware, June sixth and June twentieth, and War at the Shore on May twenty-third.
Second. Is there any discussion on any of those items? All in favor?
Barden Club special events been removed?
Yes.
The only one still in effect possibly would be the plant sale. They have yet to officially say what they would like to do with that, and at this point it is still under discussion, but every other event they notified me has been canceled. Any other discussion? So all in favor of the approval of all those special events, circumstances permitting?
Aye.
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 And by opposed?
I am not opposed.
We have two items under discussion, the mayor's report and the OEM coordinator's report. I'm going to flip-flop them and have the OEM coordinator do his report first as the mayor's point, as the mayor's report references the OEM coordinator's report. So that being said, would OEM coordinator Jonathan Lacose please take over the mic?
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor, members of council. Since my last report, we've had a lot of significant developments, as I'm sure many of you know, involving the COVID-19 pandemic. Several things of note, we have started to see the, well, we have seen the very significant spike in the number of cases within Cape May County. I am happy to say that we currently do not have any confirmed cases within the borough of Stone Harbor, which is a good thing. I'm hoping that that's because of our early mitigation and the things that, Madam Mayor, you and council took early on. We're hoping that that trend continues. We've had to make two pretty significant decisions in the past few days. The first one was involving the short-term rentals. As I'm sure you all know, the governor kind of punted that to the local municipalities and was allowing us to make that determination on what we want to do on the local level. Several municipalities within the county have stepped up and enacted resolutions, if you will, proclamations, et cetera, to do that. However, today, the county was voting at three o'clock on a county-wide resolution which would prohibit all short-term rentals. Unfortunately, I haven't received it. I have a copy of the draft resolution, however, I haven't received a copy of the signed resolution. But as soon as I do, Madam Mayor, I'll be sure to get that to you and the members of council for your review. The long and short of it is, is it shuts down all hotels, motels, and any short-term rentals. The definition will be contained in the, in the resolution. So, and again, I don't have the final draft in front of me, but I believe it's till the later weeks of May. Council and mayor, does anybody have any questions on that?
That is, JT, excuse me, that is till May twenty-second, the county resolution is from May twenty-second.
May twenty-second. Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. I don't, I don't have it in front of me. The second one is obviously a more significant.
The city of Cape May put out an executive order that's, that's very, very clear. I mean, it doesn't, it's not ambiguous at all. You know, it says that the short-term rentals are prohibited from May fifth until further notice, but it goes on to specify, you know, this includes rentals by hotels, motels, guest houses, and rentals of private homes, whether they're by the owner or the owner's agent. So that, I mean, that leaves no room for, well, what about this? What about that? It's, they're all prohibited. So I hope that whatever we come out with, or they come out with, is going to be that, that defined.
My understanding and from what I've seen in the draft, it's pretty clear-cut. There's not a lot of room for interpretation, you know, at this point. So I think that we should be okay as far as that's concerned, if we do see any loopholes or anything like that. And these things are very fluid, and they are making adjustments to them, as you've seen with multiple executive orders and administrative orders, kind of fine-tuning things. You know, if we do have concerns, feel free to forward them to me, and I will get them up to county OEM, and they can address that with the freeholders.
Right, I agree with you. That seems more close to what we have here in Cape May County than the drafts here.
Are you, are you looking at the state executive order or the one that the county freeholders have put out? Because the state gave the counties the authority.
Yeah, I looked at both of them, JT, and I just, you know, when I read, when I read Cape May's executive order, it just seemed to me to be much more, much more defined and much more definite. Didn't leave any room for interpretation. It's the city of Cape May. Basically, they're prohibiting everything as far as renting out or, you know, leasing your short-term, your property short-term.
It is my understanding that the county resolution doesn't, it should be as strict, if not more strict, than the city of Cape May's. Again, I'm waiting to get the final draft signed that was to be voted on this afternoon, and I can definitely compare the two. And if I feel like the county's maybe isn't sufficient enough, I can check with the solicitor, and if we need to take action, we will do that. Cape the solicitor, and if we need to take action, we will do that. Cape May did that before, I believe, they were aware that the county was going to do it on a countywide basis. Again, I, I'm with you. I don't want to leave anything open to interpretation. I want to make sure that, that the intent and the purpose of the order, you know, is being enacted and is, it is, you know, doing what it's supposed to do without loophole.
Okay, and that, and the county one is going to go to the 22nd, is that right? Is that what I'm hearing, Judy, that from now till the 22nd of May?
Yes, that's until the 22nd of May, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, did anybody else have any other questions on that? Okay, second, and obviously, obviously, much more impactful to our residents and our visitors, as we have had to take the very painful decision to go ahead and close our beaches. I, tonight, signed an administrative order that will, I'll read it to you. I don't have the ability to share the screen, but I will get you copies of it immediately following the meeting. All Borough Beaches extending from 80th Street to 122nd Street are hereby closed to all persons. Additionally, the beach area located to the south of 122nd Street, commonly referred to as the Point, is also closed to all patrons. Second, the Marina and Municipal Boat Ramp located at 81st Street and the Bay is hereby closed to all persons and boaters. The parking area located at the westernmost point of 81st Street is also closed to all persons, as well as vehicles. This includes the bulkhead area located within the parking lot. Then, this is important. Nothing in this order shall exclude persons who are engaged in essential businesses, as defined by the Governor's Executive Order Number 107, from utilizing the municipal boat ramp for permitted essential services. These services include, but are not limited to, marine contractors and marine services slash mechanics. Additionally, all Borough Parks and Recreation Facilities are going to continue to be closed until all person, to all persons. Persons that violate this order are subject to arrest and prosecution. Now, this order will take effect at 12:01 a.m., April 8th, which is tomorrow morning, and it will remain in effect until 12:01 a.m. May 6th, 2020. So, we wanted this to sunset, if you will. If we need to continue it, we will simply do so at the next council meeting.
I have a question. Can you hear me?
I can, ma'am.
So, you're, when you're talking about the ramp, what and who can use the ramp, or what?
So, we didn't want to close the ramp to essential businesses. As, as I'm sure you all are aware, contractors are considered essential, and they are permitted. And we do have a lot of businesses that use that ramp for marine construction purposes, you know, without naming them, but companies that need to come in, that are working on bulkheads, that are doing pilings, that are putting in docks, things of that nature. And that is permitted under the executive order and as well as guidance that we receive from the Attorney General's Office. And I can forward all of that to you. It does specifically state that marine constructors, excuse me, marine mechanics and marine services, as well as construction. Marine services and things of that nature would be if you're keeping your boat at XYZ Marina, and you need to have your boat launched for the season, and the marine service drops your boat in and then leaves. That is going to be permitted. We are trying to have as little impact on, you know, those essential businesses as possible.
Okay, then I guess my question is the, the putting of floating docks in down that marina?
Yes. My interpretation, again, of the executive order, as well as Attorney General guidance, is that is marine construction. They're contractors. We are permitting that as of right now.
Okay, because it's my understanding that we, the borough, are not going to put our docks in.
That, that is correct. We are not going to put our docks in because our municipal marina is closed. It is not going to be opening April 15th, and we can discuss, you know, those things, but we are not going to be putting them in. But if you have a bay, a homeowner who has a home on the bay, and they contract with, you know, their marine contractor to drop their dock in there and bring their dock open, that is going to be permitted, yes.
Well, I, I guess the difference there, JT, is that that's an individual dock here and there, it's not a gathering spot.
That is correct. And I have spoken with several contractors, and most of them hope to be finished completing all of that work in the next week or so.
I have one, one other question on that, only because someone called me today and asked me about it when he saw that the ramp was effectively closed. I mean, there isn't that many problems with people bringing their boats down, and, you know, if they launch it at a marina and bring it over and put it behind our house and use it, right? I mean, that, I would think that's, you know, again, that's not a gathering spot or any kind of a hazard.
Are they launching, right, to clarify, are they launching it at our marina or a marina?
No, if they put the boat in at, at some other marina, some private marina, and bring their boat back here to their dock, we don't have a problem with that, I wouldn't think.
Correct.
No, we do not. We do not.
Correct.
And I, I just, for further, you know, just to speed you this, this was a very difficult decision for us to make. We want, we understand, we, we live in an island community, we cherish our beaches, and we understand, and we held out, for lack of a better term, as long as we could. But after speaking with the mayor and Mr. Smith, and I know that council was consulted, just to our residents, this was a necessary decision. For obviously reasons, we did not want to be the only municipality within the county that has their beaches open. We were just concerned that that would become such a major draw, and it would make social distancing and things of that even more difficult than they are right now. But it, I want the residents to know that it was not an easy decision, not at all.
Or, I've heard that the other, some of the other municipalities are closing their beaches till May 22nd?
I have not, I'm not sure exactly what some of the other towns are doing. Perhaps they are, I'm not sure. JT, are you sure I'm not, I think Avalon says until further notice. The Wildwoods may be May 1st. It seems to be a patchwork of dates, to be honest with you.
That, that's correct. I could get that information to you, Mr. Parzak. I, and again, at any time, if we needed to rescind the administrative order, I can do so. So, if we go, you know, if we were to say we were to go to two weeks, and things are looking up, and et cetera, and we needed to, we wanted to open the beaches before that, we're absolutely permitted to do that.
Who will make the decision to reopen Wildwood and Cape May and Avalon? Because if, if this was done in concert with the other beach communities, it would seem to me that would have to be a uniform decision on the part of everybody to do it at the same time.
Frank, the way that the governor did it, the governor gave the municipalities the authority to close their individual beaches. So, the Wildwoods are somewhat working in concert with one another. Some towns, Sea Isle and Ocean City worked together. There is no one date for the beaches in the county. Each municipality is essentially making a decision on their own, and the Wildwoods are working together. So, they'll, they'll open up the same way they closed, one by one.
And I do think, if I could just add something on to that, Madam Mayor, we would not make any decision like that arbitrarily. We would obviously, you know, draw on what the surrounding municipalities are doing, and we are in constant communication with them and, you know, their local governing bodies. And everybody is really on the same page when it does come to that. So, when I, I feel like when we feel it might be approaching the time, we would obviously consult Avalon and the Wildwoods, because again, we wouldn't want to be the first beach open, because it would, you know, it could again be a really big draw. So, I, I do think you will see them open up probably around the same time.
Mr. Lacoste, I would like to thank you for your thoughtful and conscientious leadership during these very trying times.
Thank you very much. It's, it's, it's been a pretty difficult past few weeks, to say the least. But I, I want the residents to know that the mayor's office and council have been very, very engaged in this entire process, and I really, I really do feel like the things that we are doing are paying dividends, and they're in the numbers right now. I think it'd be naive to say that we're not going to get a case in the borough, but if we keep doing what we're doing, hopefully, we can, you know, continue to mitigate that.
Any other questions for the Office of Emergence Management? I'm just going to quickly flick through and look at everybody. Okay. Um, so as we are all well aware, it's been three weeks since our last council meeting, and a lot has transpired countrywide, statewide, and also here in Stone Harbor in that three-week period. As everyone is well aware, the situation is unprecedented, and there is no rulebook. Just for your information, I am in daily contact with our administrator, who is in constant contact with our council members, department heads, and borough professionals. I'm in contact with the officer, the Office of Emergency Management Coordinator daily as well, Coordinator daily. In addition, I'm in contact with county officials on two standing weekly conference calls. One is the County Coronavirus Task Force Call, which is led by the County Health Officer and the Office of Emergency Management. The other is a weekly County Department Head Conference Call, led by the County Administrator and the Freeholder Director. In addition, I participate in periodic county mayor's conference calls facilitated by the County Administrator. JT and Bob Smith join me on all of those calls, with the exception of the department head meetings for the county. I have remained in constant contact with the President of the Chamber of Commerce to keep communication flowing between the borough and the business community. In anticipation of the restrictions we're putting in place today, I personally contacted the owners of every hotel in town and the upper management of the reeds. All of those establishments had essentially already made the decision to cancel reservations in April and early May. I spoke with the President of the Stone Harbor Property Owners Association yesterday, and he will facilitate communicating these new restrictions to homeowners throughout that organization. They have already elected the Property Owners Association to cancel their spring general membership meeting that was scheduled for early June. The council committees continue to meet as needed via Zoom. The Flood Mitigation Committee continues to meet via Zoom. The zoning and planning board meetings scheduled in April were canceled. I anticipate those meetings to be back on the borough's schedule in May. To our residents and homeowners, believe me, we understand the magnitude of the restrictions we are putting into place for the next several weeks. These restrictions are being enacted to protect the health and the welfare of our community. We all must abide by the Governor's Executive Order and limit our movements to essential travel only. Non-essential travel unnecessarily increases the likelihood that people will interact with people outside of their own household. We are all watching the number of positive cases climb in this county. On March 31st, Cape May County had a reported 26 cases. On April 6th, Cape May County had a reported 99 cases. Numbers tripled in less than one week. Cape Regional Hospital is erecting a tent in their parking lot. We have a serious outbreak of coronavirus in a nursing home in our county. 27 reported cases to date. 12 of those cases are staff. We can very well assume there are many people walking about who have coronavirus, however, are asymptomatic, and are unknowingly continuing to spread the virus. Recommendations currently are to wear a mask when in public, such as at the grocery store or the pharmacy. We have been told repeatedly by every, every level of government, national, state, and county, that the next two to three weeks are crucial to containing this virus. Now is the time to be vigilant and to come together. Remember, the actions you take today, the actions that I take today, are to not only protect ourselves, but most importantly, to protect those among us who are most vulnerable and most susceptible to falling ill and dying. As you and I maneuver through this unprecedented crisis, I beg all of you to do it with dignity, kindness, and compassion, and with an eye to the future. A future where we all emerge from this as one community, healthy, happy, and thankful to have our lives and our town back. I would like to take a moment here to say a sincere thank you to all of our first responders, our public works personnel, our administrative staff, and our department heads, who are diligently doing their jobs and keeping this town running under these extreme circumstances. And thank you to our borough administrator, Bob Smith, for your commitment to your position. We only just started with Bob at the end of January, and at the beginning of March, this crisis began. Bob's leadership has proven to be invaluable to the borough. It truly gives new meaning to the phrase "trial by fire." So, please, everyone, stay safe, stay healthy, stay home. Save lives. Does anyone have any questions before we move on with the meeting? May I have a motion approving the bill list?
Madam Mayor, I move that we approve the bill list and authorize the CFO to pay the bills when the funds are available and the vouchers are properly endorsed.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? At this time, we're about to consider a resolution to go into private session. We would appreciate it if you would all remain on my screen until the resolution has been acted upon. At the conclusion of the private session, we will come back into public session for the purpose of either taking action as a result of a discussion in private session or to simply adjourn. It is also possible that someone might bring up some other item of business in public session after we come back from private session. Resolution 2020-S-90.
Madam Mayor and Counsel, I offer Resolution 2020-S-90 to go into closed session.
Second.
Clerk, call the roll.
Mr. Dahlahan?
Yes.
Gensimer?
Yes.
Craftcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Parzak?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes. At this time, the council members will go into closed session. Those who are on this Zoom meeting just may remain in the meeting until we return.